Council meeting of Tuesday, November the 4th, 2025. Mr. Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Thank you. Councilmember Freitas.
Present.
Councilmember Torres Walker is absent. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Burnell.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum at 4:01 PM.
All right. Thank you. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any public comments on the closed session items today?
We have no public comments.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, will you please let us know what the closed session items are?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This afternoon and evening, the city council will meet to discuss three items. The first is a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, the case of Trent Allen versus the city of Antioch. The second is real property negotiations. This is property located at 113 G Street. The negotiating party is... One second. Shawn McCauley, who is the owner of the adjacent property, and the negotiating parties for the city are the city manager and myself as interim city attorney. Finally, the city council will meet to discuss an anticipated litigation item. This is significant exposure to litigation, and it involves one potential case.
All right. Thank you. We will now adjourn to closed session at 4:02. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, November the 4th, 2025. Mr. Clerk, may I please have the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Freitas.
Present.
Councilmember Torres Walker.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Burnell.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum at 7:11 PM.
All right. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. We just concluded closed session. Sorry, we're starting a little bit late. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report out?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Late this afternoon and early this evening, the city council met to discuss three items in closed session. The first item was an existing litigation matter. That matter is Trent Allen versus the city of Antioch. No reportable action was taken in that matter. The second item was a conference with real property negotiators. This is approximately 1,275 square feet of property adjacent to 113 G Street here in downtown. The city's negotiators are the city manager and myself, and the negotiating party is Shawn McCauley, and under negotiation were price and terms of payment. No reportable action was taken. Finally, there was a conference with legal counsel. This was anticipated litigation. The significant exposure to litigation. In one potential case, no reportable action was taken.
All right. Thank you very much for that. At this time, we will open this up for public comment. Mr. City Clerk, will you please read the public comment rules?
Welcome to a meeting of the Antioch City Council. Your attendance is appreciated. The State Ralph M. Brown Act guarantees the public's right to address the city council within the framework of the Speaker Rules. Because agendas encompass many business items, Speaker Rules enable the meeting to be efficiently conducted and concluded at a reasonable hour. The city council can only take action on items that are listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak about an item not on the agenda, the public comment section of the agenda is for you. Unagendized comments are provided until no later than 7:30 PM, when the city council moves on to the agenda items. There is another opportunity for public comments at the end of the meeting. If you wish to speak either during public comments or during an agenda item, please fill out a speaker request form located at the entrance of the council chambers. Please place the speaker request form in the tray near the city clerk before the council meeting begins. This will enable us to call upon you to speak. It is important the speaker request form is retained as a public record and as such, may be shared with others upon request in line with the California Public Records Act. On your speaker request form, please identify if the comment is for announcement of community events, public comment, or a specific agenda item. No one may speak more than once on an agenda item or during public comments. Speakers will be notified shortly before they are called to speak. When you are called to speak, please limit your comments to the time allotted, up to three minutes at the discretion of the mayor. The consent calendar is a group of items which are determined to be routine. These items are usually considered all at once and approved without further discussion. If you are opposed to action which is recommended for an item on the consent calendar, please submit a speaker request form before the meeting and place in the speaker card tray near the city clerk. This will enable the item to be removed from the consent calendar and call on you to speak. If the meeting appears to be going late, the city council may decide to continue some items until a subsequent meeting. The city council will try to make this determination around 10:45 PM. It is the goal to stop discussing agenda items by not later than 11 o'clock PM.
All right. Thank you. Can you please announce our public speakers?
We have four general public comments. And we have Rodrick Coleman, followed by Crystal Law, and then Melissa.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rodrick Coleman, and I'm a veteran who served. And I was homeless 12 years ago. And I know the lifestyle of homelessness. And there's a lot of things that's being missed that I wanted to share with you guys as a solution to these homeless encampments. You have these people hazmaged up with these suits on and go clear out these encampments. And within 48 hours, they write back. The city have a lot of property. And I just wanted to suggest that the city would call in the National Guards only for the purpose of setting up tents. Because every year, we go to stand down, and that's what we live in for three days, tents. And then we can start processing these people out of their addictions into being productive citizens again. You've got a lot of talent out there that's lost and don't know how to get back. And putting people in shelters, that's not going to do the job because there's nothing there to substitute their addiction or the urge for the crack cocaine, the heroin, the crystal. And it's a waste of time. And then you've got people there that works there that don't have experience on people's behavior. They just got a job, and they don't know how to treat people that's coming out of their addiction. So I just wanted to share that with you guys, and hopefully, that something would change because the way it's going now, you've got a lot of people over here at the Antioch Square that needs a lot of help. I feed them a hot meal once a week. I do what I can to give back. But you, as the city, y'all can do more, a whole lot more. And you can't beat homelessness out of a textbook. You can't win the war like that. You've got to have people to interact with these people. These people've got stories out there, and they don't know how to get rid of the pain that they're going through. So I would suggest if you guys would start looking at the properties that you have and start setting up some tents, ground zero, 30, 60, 90 days of processing people out of their addictions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal Law, followed by Melissa and Leslie.
Hello. I just wanted to comment on the Tower Zone shooting. On August 17th of this year, I messaged three of you about what was happening over there with regards to underage minors and them serving underage minors. And two years ago, I did the same. I can't remember who I reported that to, and it was my son that was over there buying underage vapes. And I saw it on his statement. So that prompted a call. So I've let someone from the city know from two years, and most recently on August 17th, that this shop has been facilitating sales to minors. I've also reported it to the, what is it? The firearm, tobacco, alcohol thing with the federal government. They did nothing either. And I just want to compare this to back in 1991 where I worked. There's a lot of drug sales going on outside where I worked. And I actually did call the police department. They actually responded, assigned me an undercover detective. And between him, my cousin, and myself, he was able to make an arrest of a drug dealer with guns in his cars. And that's the kind of proactive policing that actually made me think very highly of the APD until most recently. And it gave me a lasting sense of trust, you know, back then. And I understand resources are limited and priorities shift, but this community still needs to have that same responsiveness to community members that tell you guys what's happening. I hope that there is going to be an investigation in the Tower Zone smoke shop because I know they facilitate sales to underage children. And here's the fact. Now, a nine-year-old got shot that was allowed to be there, and a 17-year-old pulled the trigger because he was upset about something. And if someone would have responded, you guys or the federal government, maybe someone could have shut that shop down because I know they facilitate sales to underage children. Thank you.
Melissa?
Nope, Crystal. So hello to everybody. Good evening. Yesterday, at the Police Commission Board, I made a couple of comments. So on, I'm just going to give you guys some more specifics. On the 24th, I was walking down Sycamore and saw an actual police officer with a gun and a badge. I know the difference between a police officer and the, yeah, the other ones. I totally know the difference, okay? I spoke to the police officer. He said, yes, we are doing an active sweep. They had the service pros or whoever you guys contract was also there. I asked him, who are you guys sweeping? They were already sweeping the ones up underneath the bridge, and they were now going towards the end of that canal that's over there off of L Street, right behind, or right before the freeway. The reason why I was bringing this up is because we have 85 active police officers right now. I just didn't feel like, why are we putting all the, whether they're just there to facilitate or whatever the case may be, how can we afford to even put an officer there when we don't have officers to even respond to calls? So my question, I mean, what I wanted to say, I only have 1 minute and 32 seconds. Police sweeps are not the solution to homelessness. They are costly, traumatizing for individuals, they destroy personal property, and merely displace people without addressing the root cause. There's other ways, effective, humane ways to get this done. Housing first and immediate shelter solutions, which I have a whole entire thing that I wrote up. The core principle here is that a person needs stable foundation before they can effectively address other challenges like employment, substance use, or mental issues. Housing first programs, this is the gold standard. It provides permanent affordable housing with no precautions. Sobriety, supportive, we can do low-barrier emergency shelters. These are traditional shelters that can have rules that they exclude people such as sobriety, curfew, separation from pets. So we don't really want those ones, right? But we have other things like tiny homes, villages. We have already tried, we're already doing the motels. We have, we can do prevention and systemic interventions, right? Which is way cheaper. We can also do eviction and prevention, financial assistance. I have this whole thing written out, which I am going to email everybody. Get some other people involved instead of just sweeping. It's ridiculous.
Leslie?
Okay, okay. Good evening, council. I have several things to say. The first thing I wanted to say is I noticed on here that today, you're ready to give a homeless proclamation, a homeless awareness month for this month. You guys ought to be shamed. That's just like me treating people who have been sexually assaulted and sex trafficked and say, okay, we're going to give an award to a perpetrator who's cleaned his life up. Come on now. You have done absolutely nothing because you're not affected. So that's really disgusting that you shouldn't even bother to do that. You're terrible. Anyway, so going on to my next comment is that about these sweeps and using the police. We, and I started off, as you very well know, on the Antioch Police Oversight Commission. My whole reason was to change the image of what the police were doing here in this city. That's what I wanted to do, and to help clean up their image. See, I didn't have anything of saying, oh, I get to go party and drink and get drunk and do all the rest of the stuff that you got up there smelling alcohol on all the people when I go to meetings. That's why I don't go anymore. I don't smell that alcohol. Anyway, if you're using the police at the sweeps, that is so asinine. I mean, we're trying to clean up their image, yet you're putting them out there like, look what the police are doing, when it's not the police who fought. They got other stuff to do. Office of Public Safety and what is the name of that thing? Whatever that office's name. Huh? Code, or the Office of Public Safety, the one that, oh, Lord. Councilmember Torres Walker helped put together. These are one of the things they were supposed to be involved in doing from the very beginning. But of course, we know that you guys came in and everything they did, everything that was done, everything that was approved by ex-Mayor Lamar Thorpe, you came in here with the agenda to tear that apart. So they should be the office that should be dealing with this homeless problem. Last thing I'm going to say is, why aren't you guys stepping? I haven't seen nothing from the city of Antioch, the city council saying, we're getting food together to feed these people who are not getting their food stamps this month, who don't have any money to buy food. Now, if I can take $500 out of my pocket last week and then told them when I get paid, this nigga gonna give another 500 to give to people in order that they're going to distribute food, what the hell is wrong with this council? That's all I got to say.
You're right. Good evening, council. I just came today. I've been looking at all y'all faces. Everybody's coming up here. It looks like homelessness is a topic, right? And I've also been looking at yours, and I did watch the meeting at APOC yesterday. And I was very disturbed by it because, you know, I've always liked you. I really have. I'm like, oh, okay, she's good for the city. But then when I saw that meeting, it literally felt as though you were literally trying to gaslight the community into thinking that APD has nothing to do with homeless sweeps, that it was code enforcement. We have been here for years. Homeless people and advocates have for years been saying how APD has been treating unhoused people that are on the streets. So they are there. And to me, you kind of sounded like him when he was city manager, sitting there when we was telling him over and over and over again how Linderman was tormenting people that were on the streets. And yet, you sit there, I'm looking at everybody's face tonight, and you have such this, I ain't going to use the word, standing face, where everybody is concerned, everybody is looking like, what have they got to say? The man came up here to talk about his experiences with homelessness. We are concerned because it's cold outside. It's raining. That's when people start dying on the streets. We literally just lost a couple people just within the last months. So all we're asking when we coming up here, and we are not ignorant. We know the difference between code enforcement and APD. I literally called the chief about three weeks ago, or someone told him, APD is out there. And they're, yes, and also code enforcement too. But, I mean, you can call me Karen tonight. I want to talk to the manager. Who is the boss? Are you the boss? Because if you the boss, you the boss over all these departments. So I want to know, just like we did with APD, we have new policies for them. Maybe we need new policies for code enforcement as well. Why are they out there taking people's stuff, people's tents, people's things that they need to survive while they're out in this cold weather? Let's have a heart. And like I said, once again, I have faith in you until last night, when I seen you up there trying to literally make Crystal, when she brought up homeless sweeps. I don't think people know the difference between code enforcement and APD. We've been out here for years. You just got out here. We've been doing this, I've been doing this for seven, eight years. We know who code enforcement is. You need to check your officers, and you need to check your code enforcement. And I don't know, like I said, who is the boss? Who's running this show? But we need to make sure that y'all have, y'all have, I have had, I don't have personal relationships, but I have talked to at least most of y'all. And I know y'all have a heart when it comes to unhoused people. Somebody needs to step up and say, look, let's just not take their tents when it's raining. I understand the garbage. Yes, we want the businesses to thrive, but not at the expense of people's lives when people are dying on the streets, y'all. Who is the boss?
We have no further comment cards? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to reserve my comments until the end of the evening, but, you know, as we continue to move along as a city and as a community, it's frustrating coming to these meetings and hearing the tensions and the frustrations and the anger and the emotions in the community and seeing the disconnect. And I think that dialogue, you know, I empathize with a lot of people and those feelings, but I would be remiss if I didn't step up here and say that, you know, this is a city government, so we cannot, we cannot direct our anger at one person or one individual. You cannot place blame on one person, one individual. You can look at the work that individuals do and how it contributes to the overall solutions or the process. So I'm going to tell you that as a community member, an individual, stakeholder, I've personally sat with the city manager for this city and put together an application for an over $20 million grant towards housing solutions for our unhoused. As she has stepped into a position that is new, is distinct, and requires a lot of work and direction in a lot of different spaces that are not just housing, but to be able to come into that and to be able to get that application, I want everybody to understand that there were $2.2 billion that were made available to the state of California. There were 67 cities that put in applications. There are over 600 different jurisdictions that could have applied for those funds. 67 did, and your city of Antioch was one of them because of what the city manager and her staff did. So I want to empathize with the community, and I won't stand on what they've spoken to because those are their feelings and their words. But I do want to also acknowledge that the situation is greater. It is not just one person, it is not just one department, and it is about solutions. I chose to be a part of those conversations, and I looked for those solutions. And because the city manager did too, we have that application in, and we hope for that final award and that community. So thank you.
No further public comments.
All right, then. Moving on to item number one, introduction of new city employees, promotions, and retirements. City Manager Scott.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm going to start with, I don't see our city clerk here, oh, our assistant city clerk. If she could come introduce her new staff, that would be great. Okay, I'm going to read it for you, Lisa Christina. All right. The city clerk's office got three new staff members. One of them is here tonight. Monica Gomez is our new administrative analyst. Welcome, Monica. Monica brings over 20 years' public service experience and has built a career across education, law enforcement, and city government, where she has provided high-level support for policy reforms, organizational change, and community engagement. Her professional expertise includes working closely with executive leadership, boards, and commissions to advance initiatives that reflect the needs of diverse communities. With a strong foundation in public administration and management, she has played a key role in streamlining processes, supporting policy development, and fostering collaboration, as well as getting along with stakeholders. She is dedicated to public engagement and collaborative efforts that promote organizational goals, transparency, and community engagement. Monica also commits her time volunteering in various nonprofits as a bilateral contributor to the scholarship selection process, where she has dedicated her summer reading candidates essays and serving on the interview panel for the Chicana Latina Foundation. Monica holds a bachelor's degree in public administration, a master's through the MBA program in management, and is currently pursuing her doctorate in organizational change and administration. For a fun fact, Monica enjoys creative outlets such as baking and designing three-dimensional cakes for family and friends. Welcome, Monica.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, city council, staff, city manager Scott, thank you so much for this opportunity. I look forward to serving this community. I look forward to working with my colleagues and the staff. I have been very welcomed here, and I'm really looking forward to moving everything forward with the rest of my colleagues and the staff. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Monica. Next up, we have our new Community and Economic Development Director, Zach Seal. He officially began on October 6th. He holds a bachelor's degree in sociology, a master's degree in city planning, and brings over 25 years of experience in city planning and economic development throughout the East Bay. Zach's impressive track record includes leadership roles in Pleasant Hill, where we stole him from, sorry, Ethan, Martinez, Oakland, Alameda, and with the Association of Bay Area Governments, where he has consistently delivered high-impact results for local communities. In his most recent position as Economic Development Manager for the city of Pleasant Hill, Zach played a pivotal role in revitalizing a key area of downtown by attracting Osaka Marketplace, a unique grocery store and restaurant market hall, to a long vacant building. He has authored much of the city's 500,000 merchant shopping, support shopping initiative, which included launching an award-winning technical assistant grant program for small businesses. His previous work includes negotiating the agreement that brought the Martinez-Sturgeon Professional Baseball Team to Waterfront Park and establishing the public-private partnership that launched Oakland's free Broadway shuttle, connecting downtown residents and workers to the Jack London waterfront. Earlier in his career, Zach served as a city planner for the city of Alameda and the Association of Bay Area Governments, where he helped shape regional planning and planning strategies and oversaw a range of private development projects. Outside of work, he is a proud father of two young daughters, and by his own account, a recently-minted expert in dad jokes and hair bows. a recently-minted expert in dad jokes and hair bows. Welcome Zach.
Thank you, Bessie. Thank you to the mayor and the city council for this opportunity. I'm really excited to be here. I also feel like I'm stepping into this role at a very opportune time. As you know, the city is embarking on updating its general plan for the very first time in 22 years, including an economic development element. And I also know that the city council is really putting a lot of emphasis on economic development. So I just think it's a great time for me to be here. My staff is really great. I've been here for one month, but I'm just really enjoying myself so far. And I'm looking forward to working with my staff, with you, the city council, and also the community to work together and achieve a lot of the goals and really see a lot of that potential that we always talk about, that Antioch has, and really trying to tap that potential over the next few months and beyond. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you Zach.
Thanks so much Zach. We gave Zach some hard projects. He is redoing the code enforcement program, and will be bringing your two-year short-range strategy for economic development to you on the December 9th meeting. The last item that I have from the city manager's report out is I wanted to acknowledge Shahad Wright. He has been promoted to the Parks and Recreation Director. So we love Shahad.
Come on up here Shahad and say a couple words.
Wants to say anything, you know, make him get up. Come on.
He's rarely at a loss for words, so I'm sure he has something prepared.
So that's how I ran down three years ago. Like it was the Price is Right enthused, and so I still got that same enthusiasm. I almost forgot it, but I brought it back with the rundown. I want to say thank you to the city manager, the council, and I'll be remiss, Brad Hefenberger took a risk on me three years ago. I tried to get into a city, no city's called me back. I changed my name, I thought it was my first name, and it wasn't. Brad taught me a lot, gave me opportunity, and I'm here today. So thank you for you guys giving me the opportunity, and Brad. So I continue to fight.
Shahad.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Director Wright. Next up, we have Police Chief V. Hills, introductions for his new employees.
Ms. May, how you been?
All right.
Pretty good.
Good evening, council, good evening, community. I apologize in advance, we're playing catch-up because I feel like we skipped a month. So I will start first with our newest crime analyst, Amanda Young. Amanda was born and raised in Southern California and moved to the Bay Area in 2017. Before joining APD, she worked as a dispatcher for the California Highway Patrol. During her free time, she likes to spend time with family, travel, go to comedy shows, and listen to country music. Fun fact about Amanda, she doesn't eat any fruit or vegetables. Amanda Young. Next up is our newest community service officer, America Gaetan. America was born in Martinez and raised in Pittsburgh. She graduated from Pittsburgh High School in 2017, where her favorite subjects were math and physics. Shortly after, she attended CSU East Bay and graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. On her free, in her free time, she enjoys building Legos, listening to music, and spending time with her family. She also loves traveling to Mexico and attending concerts. America is excited to join APD and begin this new chapter in her career. Miss Gaetan. Next up, Officer Brian Diaz. Brian was born in Martinez and was raised in the East Bay. He attended Freedom High School and graduated in 2015. Shortly after, he joined the United States Marine Corps and served for about eight years. Two of those eight years, he was overseas in Okinawa, Japan. He then served four and a half years at the Marine Corps Headquarters in Quantico, Virginia, where he was promoted to sergeant. While in the Marine Corps, he became a black belt in the martial arts program and later became a black belt instructor. Prior to joining APD, he worked as a program manager for the anesthesia department at St. Joseph's Medical Center in Stockton. Fun fact, Brian is a single dad to his five-year-old son, and they both enjoy training in martial arts. And Brian just graduated from the academy Friday.
Good evening, I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited to be a part of the progression that the city is making, and I will not, I will not let you down.
Next up is Adrian Rivera-Palayo. Adrian grew up in Brentwood and attended Liberty High School. Shortly after graduating high school, he joined the restaurant management sales industry. In his free time, he enjoys working on cars, exercising, and spending time with his pets. How many pets you got?
I have two.
Oh, all right. Dogs, cats?
I have one dog and a cat.
All right. Adrian moved out when he was 18 and became a homeowner at the age of 19. Fun fact about Adrian, he loves playing video games. And Adrian also graduated from the academy this last Friday. Jordan Morrow. The next two were kind of ad-libbed, so forgive the, if they're out of arrangement at all. Jordan has two kids, one son and one daughter. He enjoys fishing, crabbing, and whale watching with his son. He went to school at Murray State University on a football scholarship. His father and grandfather are both San Francisco Police Department retired officers. He graduated from the police academy last month. Jordan Morrow.
Just want to say thanks for this opportunity. Same thing, I won't let you guys down. And again, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Nick Keagle. Nick spent four years in the Marine Corps in the Infantry Division. He has a golden retriever named Howard. He has a sister who's a nurse and a brother who's a firefighter. In his free time, he likes to play golf, and Nick also graduated from the academy last month with Jordan. Nick Keagle.
Just real quick, I'm grateful for the opportunity to work here. I'm excited for this exciting career I have in the future, and I won't let you, let you guys down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll get into our promotions. I'll start first with Captain Matt Cook. Captain Cook started his policing career with the Antioch Police Department in 1996 as a police explorer. He would work his way up to a community service officer, then reserve officer, before becoming a police officer in 2001. Throughout his time in Antioch Police Department, Captain Cook has been promoted through the ranks and served as a corporal, sergeant, and most recently lieutenant. Over the course of his career, Captain Cook has been assigned to investigations, been a K-9 handler, a field training officer, worked on the FBI Safe Streets Task Force, and served on the SWAT team. He has been an instructor in defensive tactics as well. Captain Cook has had the opportunity to oversee the Explorer Program, the K-9 Unit, Honor Guard, the SWAT Team Investigations, the Field Training Program, and spent some time in Internal Affairs. Captain Cook has an associate's arts and a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice from California Coast University. He also graduated from Supervisory Leadership Institute in 2021. Recently, Captain Cook has worked with our Police Oversight Commission, the Department of Justice, and our federal monitor to update and improve our policing policies and practices to improve transparency and increase the community's trust. Captain Cook enjoys camping in his RV and barbecuing and smoking meats in his backyard. Family is one of his top priorities, and he enjoys spending time with them and supporting and cheering his daughter on as she plays softball and soccer. Captain Cook.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city manager and staff. Got a lot to say there. Been here for over all 29 years. It's been an honor, and I look forward to several more years and working directly with you and the community and making positive change for our community. So thank you.
The look on your face was like, that's me? Yeah, get that bio, brother.
Captain Shane Bauer. Shane was born and raised in Concord, California, and is a lifelong resident of Contra Costa County. He began his career in law enforcement as a police officer for the city of Walnut Creek. He would later transfer to the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Department, where he worked in detention and patrol. Shane latered to Vallejo Police Department in 1999, where he worked patrol, crime suppression, traffic, internal affairs, and was their professional standards division commander. He held several ancillary duty positions, including field training officer, range master, hostage negotiator, and SWAT commander. Shane served 21 years in the United States Army Reserve, working in communications, intelligence, military police, and psychological operations. He is a veteran of the Iraq War, where he served as a team leader on a tactical-psychological operations team. Shane also serves as the chair of the Veterans Commission for the city of Martinez, as well as a committee member honoring veterans. He holds an AA degree in liberal arts and a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Shane is excited about this opportunity to serve the citizens of Antioch and looks forward to building a strong relationship with the community. Captain Bauer.
Council, mayor, city staff, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for this opportunity to allow me to provide exceptional service to the citizens of this community. Thank you.
Captain Bauer, I just want to say that your family is very proud of you, and they hope that, we believe you're just as impressive as they do. And I'm excited about working with you here in the city.
Thank you.
Lieutenant William Whitaker. Lieutenant William Whitaker was born in Tennessee and grew up in the Bay Area. His policing career began over 24 years ago at the Sunnyvale Police Department of Public Safety. Yes, for a little bit, he was a firefighter. He would spend over 18 years there, working as a firefighter, police officer, and EMT. As an officer, he worked as a CSI tech, field training officer, K-9 handler, and detective. Lieutenant Whitaker would come to the Antioch Police Department in 2020 and would work his way through the department as a corporal and as a sergeant. During his time here in Antioch, he would work as a drone operator, instructor, background investigator, detective, patrol supervisor, and most recently, a supervisor of our investigative division. Lieutenant Whitaker has a bachelor's degree in public relations with a minor in communications from San Jose State University. He also has a master's degree in criminal justice from California Coast University. Bill enjoys teaching and mentoring the next generation of police officers. In his time off, he enjoys relaxing with family and friends, watching his son play football, and watching documentaries. Bill is honored to be promoted and is excited for the new challenge and further serving the community of Antioch. Lieutenant Whitaker.
I'd like to get 10 minutes on the clock. I'll do, I'll do a hard 10 minutes, if that's okay? No, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity, Ms. Scott, for believing in me and the chief. 24 years of doing this, I think I do it fairly well, and I continue for 24 more. And, just kidding, maybe two, but I'll be here and, maybe three. I will, I promise that I will lead, lead with courage, always be honest, and provide the lasting kind of legacy that I want to believe that the officers that are starting now can, can have in the future. So thank you.
And last but certainly not least, Lieutenant Franco Caesar. Lieutenant Caesar started his policing career with the Vallejo Police Department in 1996 as a police cadet. In 2001, he was hired by the Fairfield Police Department as a police officer. In 2011, he was promoted to sergeant. As a sergeant with the Fairfield Police Department, Lieutenant Caesar has had the opportunity to oversee patrol, youth services, major crimes, family violence, special operations, SWAT team, and mobile field force. In addition, he was the coordinator for the Active Shooter Response Team, Peer Support Program, Their Explorer Program, and Their Threat Liaison Program. Prior to leaving Fairfield PD, Lieutenant Caesar volunteered with the Fairfield Police Activities League, serving as an executive board member and treasurer. Lieutenant Caesar has an associate's of arts in criminal justice from Napa Valley College and a bachelor of science in criminal justice from California Coast University. He has also graduated from the Supervisory Leadership Institute in 2020. Lieutenant Caesar enjoys taking his family on international trips. His unique travel ritual is exploring the local McDonald's menu in every country he visits, specifically searching for the exclusive special items that cater to the regional palate. It is a, I didn't see that coming. It is a fun and easy way for him to sample the unique flavors of a new destination. Lieutenant Caesar.
Thank you, thank you, council, thank you, city manager, and thank you to the chief. Ready to work. I've been a worker all my life. Got a great work ethic, I'm ready to help out the department in moving them forward to the future. Thank you to the chief for giving me the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, we have the Public Works Director to introduce his new staff.
Good evening, mayor, city council. I just want to recognize what an excellent job our HR staff does in bringing in new people and going through the process. It's much appreciated from, I believe, all the departments, the effort that they put in for all of this. I'm super excited I get to introduce a promotion. Austin Antonazi, he's been promoted from a general labor to a water treatment plant trainee. Since he joined the city in December of 2024, Austin has demonstrated a strong commitment for professional growth. He's had a productive, he has been proactively enrolled in training programs to expand his knowledge and skills in water production, and has successfully obtained his grade-two certification in water treatment. Actually, he, he's passed his grade-three test, it's just a matter of time before he gets that certification also. Please help me welcome Austin to the, actually, help me promote Austin.
I just wanted to say that I'm grateful for this opportunity, and I'm excited to further my knowledge in water treatment.
All right, thank you.
He's also, he's also an outstanding cornhole player.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments on this item? We have no public comments.
I will.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you new recruits? Where's the police? They all left. Well, I just want to say that I'm so proud of whoever's hiring these new, young police. Because now, see, there was an incident in my neighborhood the other day. So of course, we called the police. And when they got there, they were all youngsters. I don't even know what color they were, but I'll tell you this much. They smelled so delicious. They made an old woman wish for younger days. And my neighbor, young women that were coming from across the street over my house, so we could all tell them what was going on, they were all over those officers. I don't know what kind of cologne, I tell you, it smelled so good. I did not want them to leave. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We gonna have to limit cost of service to that address? Oh my God. I just wanted to come up and say, even from my last public comment, I did want to say I'm always happy to see the new recruits, especially like the younger ones, right? So I do appreciate what the city is doing. Don't get me wrong, I may come up here frustrated about homeless sweeps and things like that because I just really want y'all to understand that people are suffering on the streets. But I do see, you know, that our police department is moving in a more positive manner. And so I just don't want to be the one to just come up here and just only complain. I've seen, even when I went downtown Amtrak during one outreach not too long ago, one of the, I think she was D1, the D1 player that chief was talking about, she was down there. And she was just hanging around, she kind of went up, talked to us, talked to some of the volunteers, we're talking to some of the unhoused folks that were down there, just really sweet, really cool. Want to recognize Sequoia, who is on the, shh, I can't hear, I can't hear. I can't talk because I hear you in the background. Sequoia, who is on code enforcement, she's like a newer lead or whatever, she's amazing, she does amazing work. So I did, I did feel the need to come up here and say, chief, I do appreciate you, I mean, even the, some of the work that you're doing, there's some things I'm not always 100% okay with, but that's fine too. But I won't take away from, I know some of the work that you are doing out here, and the better, you know, what's, the good things that are happening in Antioch too. So I wanted to make that very clear, I'm not only here to complain, but to congratulate the city for moving forward.
Thank you. Veloda Wilson? How do you, I'm sorry?
What's my name, y'all? Velma.
Velma, okay, I'm sorry, Velma.
Good evening, council and citizens. You know, congratulations to all the new officers and those that got promotions, I know it was well-deserved, and, you know, I'm And, you know, I'm always proud of the city in which I live in and I reside and I do the work in, and it's always a blessing to see when we can all come together collectively with one goal and one mission in mind, is to move our city forward in a collective and collaborative way. So, hats off. There's still time for those that are waited to the last minute, make sure you get your ballots in, get your ballots in, there is a ballot box out there that's going to be accepting ballots to 8:00 PM. So, make sure you do that, do your fiduciary responsibility and go vote. But I also wanted to make sure, remind the community that next week, we will honor all of the men and women who served this country on Veterans Day. And thank you to the County Board of Supervisors for recognizing the Tuskegee Airmen today as a part of World War I, the 80th anniversary to World War, the World War II veterans. And those that don't know the history of the Tuskegee Airmen, they were an interesting part. I know we're speaking on a different item, but I just want to make sure that this all comes together as we could talk about what our city is doing to move forward. So, please make sure that you do your job and congratulate our chief and all of our new officers, and make sure if you see them out on the street, make them feel welcome to this city, and let them know that we are about moving forward.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give props where props are due, Ms. Betsy. I love the fact that you are, even though I know you're not like the ultimate decision-maker, but I, just to see the, the, the difference of, you know, these hires compared to what we were hiring before. And so, I just appreciate your, your, you know, the way that, I just feel like you look at it different. So, I just appreciate all the different hires that we've had, because I've had minimum interaction with them, but the interactions that I have had is mostly positive. So, for that, I want to thank you for that, and for everybody else who has their hand in it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Devin.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody, how y'all doing? Just want to follow with my community and as the current Vice Chair of the Antioch Oversight Commission, I just want to welcome, again, you know, I was at some of the officers swearing in, but I just wanted to give them a warm welcome to our city and the progress that is continuously being made within our department. And it has been a pleasure working alongside APD and our DOJ monitor in Lexington to get good policy that these officers will follow in the future. And I'm happy to just be here in community tonight with all of you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No further comment cards.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item number two, proclamation. We have one proclamation tonight, it's for Homelessness Awareness Month, November 2025. Whereas November is recognized as Homelessness Awareness Month across the United States to recognize the numerous reasons people become homeless, the challenges faced by adults, young adults, youth, and families experiencing homelessness, and to mobilize community-wide efforts toward lasting solutions. Whereas the City of Antioch recognizes that homelessness impacts individuals and families from all walks of life. Whereas research shows that criminalizing homelessness worsens the crisis and deepens existing racial inequities and systemic disparities. Whereas according to the January 2025 point in time count, the City of Antioch had the highest number of unsheltered individuals in Contra Costa County, 246 persons, representing approximately 11.6% of the countywide total, a significant decrease from 413 persons counted in 2024. Whereas the City of Antioch, through the Opportunity Village Program, is providing interim housing and supportive services for 37 DEVPAR-specific encampment residents and their 25 dogs, and permanent housing. And whereas the City of Antioch is committed to working in coordination with Contra Costa County and local organizations to provide housing, shelter, supportive services, and basic resources to all people experiencing homelessness. Now therefore, I Ron Burnell, Mayor of the City of Antioch, hereby proclaim November 2025 as Homelessness Awareness Month, and encourage all City of Antioch citizens, partners, and businesses to recognize the need for and commit to building and sustaining a coordinated and equity-driven continuum of care that meets the complex needs of people experiencing homelessness rooted in dignity, equity, and hope. And to receive this proclamation is Lenita Wheeler, the Executive Director of Winter Nights Family Shelter.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members and community partners. I'm Lenita Wheeler, and I have the privilege of serving as Executive Director for Winter Nights Family Shelter as of August of this year. I'm honored to accept this proclamation, recognizing Homelessness Awareness Month and the City of Antioch's steadfast commitment to compassionate practical solutions for those experiencing homelessness. About eight years ago, Antioch invested in learning about safe parking, best practices, and even sponsored Winter Nights representatives to attend a conference to explore how these programs could be brought to Contra Costa County. This early vision has grown into something extraordinary. We provide a place where people can rest without fear, have access to restrooms, community, and connection to resources. Last year, we served 146 individuals, and we expect to serve more this year. 5% are families with minor children. We're deeply grateful for our partners, especially St. Ignatius of Antioch Catholic Church and the Bay Compassion. The Winter Nights Safe Parking Program in Antioch is a testament to what's possible when a city, faith communities, and nonprofits work together hand in hand. Together, we're not just raising awareness, but we are transforming lives. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lenita. If you'd, if you would stay up there, we're going to come down as a council and take a picture with you. And also, if I could have the other folks that work with the homeless in our community come down for a picture also, appreciate that. Oh, I'm sorry. I always get so excited to take a picture, I forget. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, now we can go down and take pictures.
We all gonna, they gotta stand close to each other like you like each other.
Look at the camera.
All right, thank you. One more, one more. One, two, and, one, two, three.
All right, do we have any public comment on the proclamation? Yes, Ms. Velma Wilson, I see there.
I saw Ron earlier giving me that look like, Velma, don't start speaking on this. But
You can speak on this, don't speak on everything else.
I don't. I noticed the agenda when we talked about homelessness and our unhoused population, and I spoke on Veterans Day. I'm just coming back from the California Hawaii NAACP Convention, where we hosted for the first time a Veterans Breakfast. And part of that Veterans Breakfast, we had a keynote speaker who spoke to a very intentional point on our veterans and homelessness. And one of the things he challenged us as a community, and those that never served this country, that let us never say veterans and homeless in the same sentence ever again. And that we all need to do our part to stand up, to find a way to make sure that we are supporting those that protected the streets that are, they are not now living on the street unhoused. So, if you are not a member of the NAACP, this is your time. I challenge you, join, be a part of something greater than yourself, that we protect everyone, and we make sure our civil rights, and make sure those that fought, bled, died, some that are sitting in Arlington, buried in Arlington National Cemetery that never got recognized because they were put into slaves, put into wars as slaves, and they were never freed. Let us think about those families that will never get a chance to have that final goodbye, and let us reflect on their life, their legacy that they paid for all of us to sit here and be free. Next week is a celebration, and we want to make sure we honor them. And as I continue, and I will say again, let us make sure that we don't have veterans and homelessness in the same sentence. Let us do our part to find ways to eradicate homelessness once and forever.
Thank you. See one more public comment?
Yes, we have one more.
I appreciate what Velma said, I just wanted to share that. I had 14 brothers in one family. I've had a total of 30, 14 plus another 35 in my family that are veterans. When I was coming here during the meetings, during 2020, we couldn't come, but I was going online, I didn't miss a meeting. I was taking care of a cousin who was much older than I am, and he had come back from the Vietnam War with brain damage, everything, and had schizophrenia. And my cousin was living in a storage shed in the back of somebody's house. He shouldn't have had to do that. I couldn't, he wanted to come live with me, but I couldn't because I was working, going out with mental health. My daughter was going out, we're leaving the house, so it was like somebody needed to be with him. And the VA did not want to pay us as family members to hire somebody to bring. But I just want to say, he's buried, and since I've been, since then, it's, I think it's two more cousins since we've been, that I've been taking care of until they died that are veterans. And I appreciate, I guess it's Delta, the veterans from there, even during COVID, they said, we're going to come out to your house and do the thing, the gun salute, the whole thing, I'm thinking, oh, Lord, neighbors are going to, yeah. But they came out, wore their mask, they came in, we did an online funeral, and they spoke, they did the presentation of the flags, they didn't shoot the bullets, they gave me the bullets, okay? But they were there to honor. So, I'm going to say, I have a very special place in my heart for veterans. One of my cousins, there's a building named on Treasure Island after him, it's for veterans' housing. Councilmember Tamisha Torres Walker went over there with me because I'm the only living relative, and when they did the building dedication and all of that. So, I'm working with them again, and her soon, to bring them out here to Antioch. So, that's in the works right now, so they can build another building, housing for single and veterans with families, and also wraparound services because we need it. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I just felt the need to speak on this one. I just got to say, y'all, it has been a long, long journey. Like I said, about eight, nine years ago, just starting doing this work, literally, it was Martin Luther King's birthday, and it was a video online, and it had him talking about doing for the community. Go out there, and I had a party bus business or a limousine business at the time, so I'm like, I want to do for the community, got the whole family together, went out there, started meeting people, and just fell in love with the people that were out here on our streets. So, doing the advocacy work, do all the tears and trying to get people into motels and doing a GoFundMes and all these different things, right? And then fast forward all these years to see what Antioch has done, transitional housing, I would have never thought that Antioch would have been, we would have had a motel, or laundry vouchers, or shower program, or helping different nonprofits, religious groups, y'all don't know how many people in the community drop off donations and clothing and all, like, just coming together for this cause, right? And so, like I said, I'm just, I'm very proud of all the work that everyone, Monica, you've been here for a long time, you know, everyone in the city has done. It takes a village, and this has been a really long journey, but, I mean, I complain, I come up here and there are certain things that need to be done, but when it really comes down to it, I appreciate all the stuff that y'all have done, really. I mean, even you, Ron, you were here taking me to go ride around in different encampments, trying to figure out what the best thing was to do. Tamisha, you did the same thing when you first got on board, we went to encampments, just the way you guys have voted, even on the Comfort Inn, you know what I'm saying? Just different things like that is to show me that you have a heart, and I'm just so very thankful and grateful. And I'm telling y'all, it was God, it was nothing but God. I'm so thankful to Him for where we were and where we are today, and I am really optimistic about what we have, what, more things that we have for our unhoused community. And I just want to thank everybody that had a play in that, and just thank y'all, because it has been a long and tough journey, but I'm so proud of the city that we are today.
All right, thank you.
No further public comments.
All right, moving on to announcements of civic and community events.
Thank you. The following positions are available.
Oh, no, this is, this is announcements of civic and community events.
Sorry.
Wow, I'm popular tonight. Good evening again, just to remind the community and you, Counsel, that November 11th is Veterans Day, we will be having this City of Antioch and Delta Veterans Group Annual Veterans Day Celebration. It will be at the Antioch Marina. We are still accepting parade applications, so please, if you have not gotten in a parade application, please send that to antiochvet2014@gmail.com. Actually, antiochvet2018@gmail.com. Or you can actually reach out to myself or to J.R. Wilson with Delta Veterans Group, so you can make sure I know that you will be attending the Veterans Day Celebration on November the 11th. It will start with a pancake breakfast, and that is hosted by the Antioch Rivertown Veterans Lions Club, and then we will commence with a program, and then the parade, which will go down from the marina, down Second Street, and then walk back up. We will plan to be ringing the Liberty Bell at approximately 11:11. So, please come out and support our veterans community again. Also, on November the 14th, it's Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. We will be We will be doing Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day to really promote pedestrian safety. For those that do not know who little Ruby Bridges was and now a very much seasoned grown adult, she is the one who changed the trajectory of history and was the first African-American child to desegregate an all-white school. So that is going to be Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, it's November the 14th, it's a Fri, it is a Friday. We will be on the corner of G Street and 18th, trying to encompass students that are going to Antioch Middle, Antioch High, Marsh Elementary, which is further up the hill, and also Fremont. If anyone has ever driven down during school, in the morning when schools, the traffic is crazy. Mr. Rocha, Louis Rocha knows that. He has always been out there advocating for people to slow down and making sure our kids are arriving to school safe. So that is what this is about, pedestrian safety. And so, thank you to APD and to the Traffic Patrol and to the Community Service Officers that are actually helping to make sure that we can promote a safe walk-to-school environment, especially on a day like Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, that is on the 14th. Also coming up is Celebrate Antioch, and the City of Antioch will be hosting our annual tree lighting ceremony, which will be on Saturday, the first Saturday in the month of December. Please come out and let's be a part and show our collective effort for our city's tree lighting ceremony. With that, also, in January, coming right off of the holidays, we will have a Quanta Celebration that to be announced, is in addition to MLK Day, which is scheduled for January the 19th. Please reach out to me if you are looking for information on how you can be involved in MLK Day. We want to celebrate the life and the legacy continually, and I would like to see our city and our city council get more involved with that day and not be just school district heavy, because that was founded by one of yours, Reggie Moore, may he rest in peace, and I want to make sure that we continue his life and his legacy with the MLK Celebration that is supposed to show a collaboration with our city and our school district alike. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On the November 11th, I'm assuming the time is eight o'clock for the pancake, 9:30 for the program?
Yes, the breakfast will start at 8:00 a.m., and then the program will commence at nine, promptly at 9:30, so we can be in front of the Liberty Bell in front of El Campanell at 11:11.
And the parade starts at 11?
The parade will start immediately following the program.
All right, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew the times.
Yes. And we will be announcing our official citizen, the Antioch Veteran of the Year and Lifetime Veteran of the Year at that program.
All right, thank you. Any other announcements of civic and community events? All right, moving on to announcements of board and commission openings.
Thank you. The City of Antioch has the following vacancies. The Board of Administrative Appeals has two full-term vacancies expiring March of 2028 and one alternate vacancy expiring December of 2025. And the Parks and Recreation Commission has one partial-term vacancy, which expires March of 2028, and one alternate vacancy expiring April 2026. The deadline to apply for these positions has been extended to Friday, November 21st. And finally, the Contra Costa County Library Commission has one full-term vacancy expiring June of 2029, and the deadline for that is Friday, November 21st. To be considered, please fill an application, which is available online at the city's website, or you can email them to cityclerk@antiochca.gov by the deadline date, or you can drop off the application in the water billing drop-off box just right outside. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to City Council Committee Reports and Communications, I'll start with Councilmember Wilson today.
Excuse me, I might have to defer my report to the next meeting, because there's some information I need to confirm.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Freitas?
Just one comment. On last Saturday, the Antioch Historical Society did a dedication of the 1871 First Congregational Bell. It was a project, a community project that raised over $100,000 in direct contribution as well as in kind. And I want to especially recognize, unfortunately, I think he's left the room, but the permanent Park and Recreation Director Shahad Wright and his team who came and really provided incredible service for the program. It's, I also want to recognize the mayor, who really had a very good time ringing the bell again and again and again, like a little kid. But, but it was really a wonderful community event, it was a great day to have it, and I just want to appreciate, express my appreciation to city staff, excuse me, for supporting the program. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Torres Walker?
Just a quick update, happy to be back. I've been missing in action. I know some people enjoyed that. I see the smiles on your faces. The Green Empowerment Zone meeting is November 22nd, so I will be at that. The City and Schools Standing Committee met October 20th to discuss the results of our survey. The whole child, whole community survey looked at the preliminary data and decided we want to expand our reach and get more community input. At our next meeting, we will start to discuss how we roll out community engagement around this concept in the new year. Cannabis Standing Committee has not met, but myself and Councilmember Freitas are trying to get another meeting on the calendar. I believe we wanted to do a tour of dispensaries, which should be fun. And so, look, very much looking forward to that. Like I said, I've been missing in action, so what I want to do is thank both supervisors, Chanel Scales Preston, as well as Diane Burgess, for hosting a joint community town hall here in Antioch on October 14th to talk about the needs of our community. I don't believe our supervisors have, since I've been in Antioch for the past 11, almost 12 years, have ever come together to have a joint conversation around what the needs of Antioch are, and I hope it's not the last conversation. I attended the California League of Cities, I was voluntold by my great colleagues up here. I came back and I was voted in to go, and it was an amazing experience. They have voting, new board of directors, a lot of different workshops. The workshops I attended were upward mobility related to economic development and transportation and youth-centered communities and policies. So how do we continue to do practices here in Antioch that center our youth and we become a youth-centered city? So that was amazing. I was graciously invited by the police chief and the city manager to attend NACO, which is the National Association of Civilian Oversight and Law Enforcement. That was October 26th through the 31st. It was amazing to be there with a majority of our Oversight Commission, as well as the police chief, and I was actually the only elected official there from any city. And people were really impressed with Antioch because not only did we have our law enforcement folks there, our commission there, they also felt like they were gonna go back and also advocated in their city to send council members as well, because most of the time, what we had saw was that when people who set the stage for policy in your community don't spend time in the spaces where the work is being done, they often make decisions that could devastate the work, especially of oversight bodies. And so, it was, it was great. I'll do a full report out on that, but it was an amazing experience. I, I do want to address some things, you know, I think like, people are saying like, where's the, where's the council allowed the people, it's like, where are our comments around the violence that's happening in the community right now? Why hasn't anybody spoke about the violence happening in the community right now coming from this diocese? Well, I've been absent and now I'm back, so I want to talk about the violence, because I think that, you know, we, we've been having conversations around how do we curb violence from a community level, but we also need to talk, continue to talk about access, access to guns. We also need to talk about, like, have a real conversation around how do a 17-year-old end up with a gun in the first place? Despite the fact that a 17-year-old was at a tobacco place, probably getting ready to purchase, probably getting ready to purchase tobacco, right? And so, it's like, yes, we should be concerned about young people having access to tobacco, but we can't be more concerned about young people having access to tobacco than we are about young people having access to guns. And myself and the mayor and city staff attended a regional mayor's discussion, as well as the police chief, around community-based violence intervention strategies and how do we limit the access to guns, especially to young people? And I'm surprised that hasn't been discussed here. I'm surprised a report out from that meeting did not happen, because there are regional dialogues happening, and Antioch is finally at the table, and I hope that we take it serious. It's devastating when a family, when a 15-year-old gets shot in our community and we can't make sense of it in front of a family-owned business. When the police chief provides data to show us that, yeah, we have had killings in our city, but we have a higher rate of, of like injury shootings than people who actually die from a, from a gun injury, right? So how do you rationalize, only wanting to address the issue of when somebody dies and we not willing to put resources into addressing the issue when somebody actually survives? And the survivors of that violence? I had a conversation with Dr. Jag Latham, trustee Latham, from the school district, because, you know, there's like extreme lack of emotional intelligence. People are getting angrier now, faster and quicker, and don't think twice about harming someone. The fact that a traffic incident in front of Antioch High School could lead to an elderly man being beat within a half inch of his life? How do we start to address anger, harm, and violence in our community? And it's not gonna always be what police responds, but we damn sure need some strategies to be able to do that. I think that... I don't know when we gonna start having real conversations about public safety that just don't center the police department. Because response is important, but resources is important, intervention is important, and making sure that a 17-year-old not at a tobacco shop illegally buying tobacco while also carrying a gun that they shouldn't have in order to shoot a 9-year-old. And I didn't see, and even though I was out, I didn't see anybody addressing that issue in leadership. There are a series of conversations about community violence that are gonna be had starting next year with organizations that are coming together to do that in the community, that I think we as a city need to take this seriously and stop trying to dismantle things that have been in place, put in place to address this critical issue and start deeply investing and scaling those practices up. The other thing I want to address is like, when are we gonna have a conversation about a warming center? Because it is getting colder, it is gonna rain, do we have a capacity to do that as a city? Do we have the resources to do that? And who do we need to work with to address the issue of unhoused people dying on the streets and in the cold if we aren't able to find them somewhere to keep warm? I also want to note, me, myself, and Councilmember Rocha had a visit to base camp, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem, had a visit to base camp, because they did come here and pleaded with the city to provide resources to them. We unanimously said that we would look into it, and we have not gotten back to them since August. So myself and Mayor Pro Tem Rocha went out to visit the site in addition to talking to the state about some other land that could be used for tiny home villages. Like, these things are outside of our grasp, we just need to have a political will and a desire, and we can make it happen. Food insecurity is real. Today, our county supervisors just unanimously voted to fund $21 million into food assistance for over 107,000 households in our county because of what's happening at the federal level right now. During the pandemic, it was churches, it was nonprofits, and even school districts that fed families. Municipalities didn't do nothing. So like, people want to know, what are we as a city gonna do to partner with, with people to address food insecurities? Because food insecurity existed before SNAP was cut off, and we need to figure out how we, how, how children and families are going to eat. So I want to thank our supervisors for taking up that issue while we still fight at the federal level to release critical resources so that people have access to the food that they're supposed to. Like, food is a human rights issue, you should have access to food. And I don't know what we is, what our position as a city is on this, but I will say that the current numbers are showing that Prop 50 is overwhelmingly passing in Contra Costa County.
All right, thank you very much. None of my committees met last week, and as far as mayor's comments are concerned, I just want to thank our community for all that they're doing as far as reaching out and building community. Our police department held a really nice event on Friday for Halloween that had a great turnout, along with animal services. The Dia de los Muertos? Dia de los Muertos, how's that? All right, close enough. So that was a really, really great event. Shahad and Parks and Recreation held down at Nick Rodriguez in the parking lot there. It was super well-attended, it was just great to see so many people coming out. I had to park in City Hall parking lot, that's how far away it was to, to get close to it, but just grateful to see, see the community come together. It was a beautiful day, people were enjoying themselves, and so just want to try to create more opportunities for things like that. Had the opportunity this morning to stop by, share, share showers that Rika puts on, and got to visit with a friend of mine, Kenny, who, who was on the streets when I met him probably eight, nine years ago, and he, he was able to go to Delta Landing for a bit. He actually landed in permanent housing, and I found out today that he's gonna be losing that housing effective tomorrow on his 68th birthday. So, so that was really sobering, just besides all the other folks that were there receiving services and, and, and being helped. It's just, it's just sobering to know that a 68-year-old gentleman who has a bad knee, bad hip, has a really hard time walking, is going to be without, without a house tomorrow, without a home. And, you know, he, he definitely needs, needs permanent shelter, needs, needs quality shelter. So we have a real crisis in our community when it does come to homelessness, and there's a lot of folks that are working really hard, and I appreciate everybody who is here tonight that were able to come up here, and there's a lot more who weren't here to take a picture with us when it comes to addressing homelessness and, and folks that are unhoused. And there's, there's a lot happening, there's a lot happening with food when it comes to providing food to folks, but there's a lot more work that needs to be done. So just knowing that that is something that we will be talking about more and addressing and coming up with, with real solutions. You know, we, we talked about or heard about base camp out there, which is providing trailers primarily for veterans and their families out at the fairgrounds. There's a lot of folks who are doing things independent of the city, and so we just need to find out what those are and, and find out ways that we can help leverage that and make those more, more successful. So Kenny, just thinking about you and praying, praying for you tonight, and happy birthday tomorrow, 68th birthday. Moving on to presentations, we have Contra Costa County Fire Protection District Quarterly Report presented by Fire Chief Louis Burchard. Chief Burchard, it's great seeing you. Thanks for coming down and telling us about what's happening. Antioch, I love the fact your report's Antioch-specific, so thanks for coming down and filling us in.
Nobody ever hated to see a fire.
I don't know, sometimes. Sometimes. Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Madam City Manager, it's a pleasure to be here. I appreciate the time that you give us to come out and, and share what's going on with the district, with you. I was actually thinking of some things that aren't in the presentation, so I added some, some notes, but, do, oh, great, a clicker. Perfect.
Perfect.
So it's been a few months since I've been out here, so I wanted to give you the latest and greatest. Most of our data runs through the end of September, but I think some of it's good news, so we'll jump right in. I don't think we had annexed Rodeo Hercules last time I was here. So July 1st, we finished the annexation process. So out on the west side, the city of Pinole is now part of CONFIRE, and the Rodeo Hercules Fire Protection District is now part of CONFIRE. So that completes all the annexations that we were looking to do and build strategically on trying to put some of the smaller fire districts under one roof with consistent training, apparatus, leadership, and so forth. So as of now, we have 35-staffed fire stations, one reserve station up in the hills in Breones, and we have the Wildland Fire Center out in, in Byron. We have a total of 41 fire companies. So as an example, downtown Antioch Station 81 has two companies at that station, and we're up just over 670 staff. That does not count the contracted members of AMR that we have to work on our ambulances. And we're just under 600 square miles. And so I was standing back there thinking about a couple things. Number one, as of this afternoon, the Board of Supervisors voted to extend our exclusive contract with the county to provide emergency ambulances for two years. So we will be the provider through December of '27 at this point. So that brings some clarity and some certainty to a process that is pending a competitive request for proposal or RFP, and there's a long story to it. Doesn't really have anything to do with us, it has to do with the state. But since that's over here, the, the county cannot move forward with that RFP process, so the RFP has, or sorry, the contract has been extended to allow the state to do whatever they need to do and get things moving. The other part is, I'm not sure how familiar you are with it, but with ISO ratings for fire departments. ISO is the Insurance Services Office. It is a very longstanding standardized method of categorizing the capability of fire departments across the country. About 44,000 fire departments are categorized by ISO. And it's basically used by insurance depart, or insurance agencies, insurance companies to assess risk. More importantly, to assess the ability of the fire department to put out a fire in a structure which therefore minimizes insurance risk. So CONFIRE, for as long as we can remember, was an ISO level of a three. 10 basically represents that you have no fire service and no municipal water supply, and a one would be LA City, where you've got four people, five people on every piece of apparatus, and municipal water supply, and, and you're well-staffed. So for years, we were, we were a level three, and we went through a very long process of being rerated after the annexations took place. And happy to say that we are a two, a rating of two. So that's the top 4% of all fire departments in the country receive a, a rating of two, and the top 1% are a rating of one. We missed a one by two and a half points. So it's on a scale of 100 points, so it's almost like grading. So 90 to 100 is an A, 90 to 100 is a one, 80 to 90 is a two. We were rated at 87.3, so we, we were much closer to a one than we thought. So we're gonna work on that. Much of it has to do with water purveyors, not necessarily things that are within our control, but we're gonna work with the water purveyors to get better data to these auditors and these assessors to try and improve that rating even more. But I think what it does do is it validates that your, your fire department is doing, is doing very well. So July 4th, my favorite day of the year, was actually a little better this year across the county. So looking at some stats from 2024 to 2025, everything was, was reduced. Everything was less than 2024. Less 911 calls, less dispatched incidents, less actual fires across the board, with one, one exception in the city of Oakley. So 2024 was very busy. It was very windy in 2024, July 4th. And in 2025, this year, we had very favorable weather. We had winds coming out of the south, actually, which is not really that usual or normal, very high humidity, and things were just generally a little bit more tame. So what we did see this year, because frankly, because of the wind, we received a lot of 911 calls from people saying that they were able to put their fires out, and that, you know, they, they were just calling to let us know. Whereas in 2024, they were calling to tell us that every, every tree on their lot was on fire, and embers were being cast onto somebody else's roof. So quite a different experience. Fireworks and illegal fireworks are a statewide problem. We are fortunate to have our Fire Marshal, Assistant Fire Chief Chris Bach been on a very small group that's on a task force with the State Fire Marshal's Office to share what we've experienced over the last several years and what we would like to see to try and get state engagement, to try and curb this epidemic of illegal fireworks usage throughout the state. So we're cautiously optimistic that perhaps some things might change and go our direction in the years to come. So this year was the first year that we had an aerial firefighting asset dedicated to Contra Costa County for the entirety of the fire season. Copter One was just dismissed from their contract on the, the 1st of November, so Saturday. It was based out of the Byron Wildfire Center and flew 200, or 40 fire missions and, and dropped just under 70,000 gallons of water throughout the summer. So it turned out to be quite a success. Through Measure X, and the reason why we chose this picture, we were able to obtain six of these things that are called helopods. They're very popular down in Southern California. Essentially, the vendor doesn't like me to say this, but they resemble a 40-yard dumpster, but they're actually an engineered, engineered product to be able to carry the water without structurally collapsing. And essentially, they're open on the top, just like a dumpster. They're connected to a fire hydrant or some other water source that can keep them full, and then it automatically shuts off when it, when it fills up. And we have located these in areas that don't have lakes or creeks or access to the bay in areas where water is not very easy to obtain. The whole point of this is to try and put them in more remote areas so that the helicopter has less distance to travel to get the water, go back, put it on the fire, go refill, and, and repeat. So we deployed these in September, haven't had to use them yet. We've used them in training with our helicopter, the sheriff's helicopter, CAL FIRE, East Bay Regional Parks. So we're looking forward to having them be available on day one next, next summer. But they are currently in Byron, out in Rodeo at Phillips 66, Franklin Canyon, at the Marsh Creek Detention Facility, and then we have three more that we're looking for sites. But down in Southern California, they've definitely earned their keep, and we're looking forward to having that asset for Contra Costa County next year. So along the lines of the fireworks data, this year was a better year with regards to vegetation and exterior fires. We didn't have as many throughout the county, and that's true with the city of Antioch. The city of Antioch had a little, little more than 10% reduction in those types of fires this summer, which is good news. The July 15th fire off of Willow Avenue was actually started by a welding operation and inadequate safety measures that were on that site. But that, that fire was able to get into some construction material, and you can see the really black smoke. We ended up having to do a health advisory, reaching all the way down to Discovery Bay because the air monitors were showing this column of smoke that essentially went right from the fire down through Oakley and ultimately down into Discovery Bay. But essentially, a lot of construction material and plastic material was burning, so we took that extra step. But all in all, this summer was a lot, a lot less adventurous, so to speak, than years past. So hopefully, in 2026, the downward trend will continue. A couple of different visuals for you with regards to where calls for service exist in Antioch. The top one you can sort of consider to be a heat map. The one on the bottom, I'd sort of call it more of a point map, but they essentially kinda show the same thing, where the busiest areas for us are north of Highway 4, generally in the downtown area. And you can see the call volume. I think the, the biggest tell for, for me anyway is to look at that orange line on the bar graph. That's the four-month moving average. It's fairly steady. There aren't really any peaks and valleys, so nothing's really jumping off the page as far as, as far as call volume or data or unusual things occurring. It's fairly steady. A little bit more data, no surprise, for the first nine months of the year, as with most of our communities, medical calls are the absolute lion's share of calls for service that we receive. We do have about 15 to 16% of our medical calls are now being handled just by the ambulance, so they're not sending fire and ambulance, but just the ambulance. So that's, that's an improvement in resource utilization. And then when you get down to the fires, we do have a fair amount of structure fires within the city of Antioch. Most of those structure fires are usually caused by unattended cooking. That's a, that's a very high percentage of residential structure fire causes. And then when you get down to the very bottom, the other, the fire other, most of those are going to be those exterior fires, of which of the 533, roughly 380 were exterior fires, meaning not big vegetation fires, but smaller fires that, that don't necessarily burn acres. They just burn, you know, a little bit of, of ground. So I think we'd originally done this presentation to be here in October. And October for us is not necessarily the busiest part of fire season, but it is the scariest part of fire season. It's when the most destructive fires happen within the Bay Area, so we wanted to ensure that we pointed people to some resources to be fully prepared. I would share that at the very end of this particular book, bless you, that was prepared by us and the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services, there are some good year-round evacuation planning and earthquake preparedness tips at the very end of that, that don't have anything to do with wildfires. So as we're getting out of that season at this point, there are some, some evergreen pieces of information in there for people to be prepared. And as always, we try and push the community warning system, cwsalerts.com. If you're not signed up, please sign up. That's how we notify the public of issues. That's how we notified the public with regards to that shelter in place as a result of that fire in July. And with that, I think, rather quick, but I think that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions you might have.
That's great. Does council have any questions or comments for chief? Yeah, I'll do that after. Okay. Yeah, I had, I had one thing for you, chief. First of all, I just wanna thank you for the leadership you've brought to the, to the CONFIRE since you've been there. I remember meeting you after several other chiefs had come before you, most of them trying to do parcel tax measures to gain funding, to be able to expand services and just provide services. And so when you came in, you had a different approach, and it was through CFDs primarily and things like that, which was really effective in consolidating East Contra Costa Fire, and, and just watching you operate, it's just, it's been great. Now we go from a, we're a two now, you know, on our way to a one, and so there's a lot of, there's a lot of real positive things that I see you doing and have seen you do over the years. So thank you for coming in and bringing that, bringing that to us and to our community. I'm just wondering what's, what's next for Antioch in our region? You know, I know that we're, you know, Brentwood has some stuff going on, you have some stuff going on in Antioch. Can you maybe tell us what's, what's coming up next?
Sure. Two things. Number one, tomorrow, there's a media event at Kaiser in Antioch. It's, we're calling it the Healthcare Literacy Council. We're one of the founding members. We put half a million dollars into this initiative. Kaiser is, is a founding member, Supervisor Burgess's office, and Contra Costa County Health. The, the point of this is to, is to attempt a very targeted education campaign in the eastern portion of Contra Costa County to help educate folks on where they may be able to obtain care outside of relying solely on the 911 system or emergency departments. Our emergency departments are getting overrun. The 911 system is too busy. There aren't enough resources, and the majority of the calls that we're receiving are not necessarily for emergencies per se. So we're, we're trying this education approach to identify resources and to help folks identify where they can access resources that are timely, that are urgent, but are not necessarily solely just the emergency department. So that's something that's kicking off tomorrow afternoon. The other piece, and, and Mr. Mayor, you'll remember years ago, we were, when you were the city manager, we were talking about the, I think it used to be called the Ranch Project. So we did meet with the developer, I forget, the name's escaping me.
Richland Community.
Richland, yes. And so Station, Fire Station 89 is planned to be built, what would that be, west of Kaiser? And so we do have some preliminary site plans for that. That developer will provide a, a large enough site that's buildable, so it'll have the, the sub-ins for the utilities and so forth, so that we can get to work at building a station. So that is underway to provide new coverage, additional coverage and staffing in the southern portion of Antioch for much of that new development.
All right. Thank you very much. If there's no other questions, do any public comment on this item?
I, I do have a question, but I'm gonna wait till after public comment.
Any public comment? Yes.
Having been evacuated by a fire this year, there's been no reports on what, what the cause of the fire was, so I'd kinda like to know what that is, so one could ask that question. Thank you. Black Diamond Mines?
Oh. I can give you the answer. It's an on-answer. So that's the, the 600-acre fire. Ironically, 10 years ago, we had almost the identical fire. I was the incident commander on that fire 10 years ago. That fire started in, and most of the fire, if not all of it, was in the unincorporated area or the state responsibility area. So CAL FIRE has the jurisdiction for that fire investigation. There were juveniles seen leaving the area. However, as far as I know, no actual cause has been determined for that fire or a responsible party identified for that fire.
All right. Thank you. It was excellent response to that fire, by the way, to protect the houses and everything out there. Councilmember Torres Walker?
Thank you. Always enjoy the presentations. I, I don't know if I'll ask this every time you come, but during fire season, the railroads, like people, homes like mine, who are backed up against the railroad, there's no fuel abatement, there's no clearing, there's nothing that happens, and then fire season comes, and the weeds are six feet high, and then all it take is like one ember, one person, you know, who live on the railroad trying to, you know, barbecue something, and our entire backyard is essentially are at risk of being on fire. Some of our fences and properties have been burned, but the railroad don't take responsibility, and the city don't take responsibility, so the cost is on us. And I'm wondering, like, have there been any, like, strategies or discussions in the past? I mean, you all have to respond to these fires, like, what could be done to work out the relationship between the railroad and the city to make sure the fuel abatement actually happens along the railway?
I would say probably more can be done. I can't tell you specifically that we have taken a position with the railroads. They are somewhat unique in the way that they're regulated, and we may not necessarily have the ability to regulate them as we would a normal property owner. But I do know that many years ago, we did have some success with the railroads, but maybe that was a moment in time. So it sounds like we need to reengage with them, and there's probably the two of them. There's not just one. It's probably Union Pacific and then the other one. But yeah, they're unique and sometimes challenging, but I think what I'm hearing is we need to do a better job of con- do a better job of contacting them before fire season starts so that they can know that there is some concern, and then research what limits can we take them to as far as enforcement. We have a pretty good system of abating properties. We can go onto somebody's property and clear their weeds after a certain amount of notices, and we spend about $300,000 a year doing that, and then we can lean their property for taxes. But I'm not quite sure that that same system we're able to deal with the railroads. But nevertheless, I think it sounds like we need to spend more time engaging with them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, oh, you could just take the property. I know it's like a difficult way to figure out how to regulate, but I think between the city and you all, and we could figure something out, because this fire season, nothing was done. There was no fuel abatement, there was no clearing, especially along the track that's not being used. I think it's like the overpass on Cavallo and Gary. Like, there's a track, a railway that's just not being used at all, but they don't even clear it, they don't clean it, they don't come through. So not only is it like a lot of fuel to catch fire, it's also a lot of garbage and like people dump back there, and that could also catch fire.
So it's Cavallo?
Yes. I don't know the name of the rail.
It's UP, UP Railroad.
Yeah.
Union Pacific.
So any, I mean, I don't know if residents could write you and say, hey, they're not responding to us, can y'all come clean it up? I don't know what the process will be, but I think we need some relief. We need to know that we're not, our backyards aren't gonna be on fire.
Yeah, agreed.
Next fire season.
Agreed. So I wrote just a couple of notes, and I'll talk to our community risk reduction folks about getting out there. We still do have somebody on staff who 10 years ago worked very successfully with the railroad, so he may be able to engage. I'm sure that his counterpart doesn't work for the railroads anymore, but it starts with a phone call.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and to Councilmember Torres Walker's point, the whole railroad, you can go from one end to the other through Antioch, it has a lot of garbage and what she's talking about.
Okay.
I see one more public comment. Sorry, I missed you when you came through, Ms. Wilson.
Oops, I'll get it. I got it.
I just wanted to tell him, thank you for bringing up the point with Kaiser and Confire. I actually, because I am very community engaged, had heard about the event and know that they are really pushing that. I just wish that we would have been, it would have been a little bit better, more marketed, and not just marketed, but really so that the public really knows that that is happening. This is where we lack with our schools, because you're talking about a huge populace, and a lot of us are Kaiser members, and Kaiser failed in that regard in making sure that that information got out. And I think we all could utilize information so vitally important. And I just want to tell you, thank you, because when I was listening and talking to several executives of Kaiser and hearing the initiatives that are coming, and to know that we are trying to do something that's going to be more proactive than reactive, and that's a lot of work, and I know that you put a lot of man-hours to really come up with this just amazing opportunity. So those that have not done that research, please make sure you are going, and this is still time for you to even get onto your social media and tell them to get out there and learn how we can be more proactive in our community around emergency services and really bring off the burden of our first responders and those that are coming into our emergency rooms, and we can do things that are going to be more proactive in that. I just really wanted to make sure and say publicly, thank you for that work, because I was very much engaged about it, but I'm one person, and I can't get all that information out to the thousands of Antioch residents that I think would utilize and be very, would love to know that, and not just Antioch, but all of East Contra Costa County. So thank you again, and I'm excited to know about and hear about the new future fire station coming into southeast Antioch. I think that's very much well-needed and long overdue.
Well, thank you. I will, I don't want to steal the thunder from the media event tomorrow, but there are, there's an ambassador program. So I think we, the group has hired eight ambassadors to be able to go around to community events and engage the public to educate them on the intent of the Healthcare Literacy Council. So it's not a one-shot deal tomorrow, it's just the start, the beginning of things to come, so.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes. Mr. Becker?
Thank you. So it's interesting, as you listen to everything tonight, it's all connected, right? I mean, from warming centers to healthcare literacy programs, to access to affordable housing or shelter space, and it's only through what we say is stakeholder engagement or agency participation, collaboration. And, you know, as I sit here listening, you know, I think to myself, right now, today, this very minute, Contra Costa Fire owns a property in the city of Antioch that is undeveloped, that is zoned for residential housing, that the city of Antioch has put an emergency shelter overlay on. And the state of California today, this very minute, has put out a $2 billion grant program to build that kind of affordable housing and permanent supportive housing that addresses individuals with low AMIs, with behavioral health and mental health diagnoses, which by and large, when you look at our unhoused population that are tapping into our 911 resources or our emergency care facilities, they have these existing diagnoses and are showing up at these facilities for these resources. And two weeks ago, Contra Costa County released Measure X, which is a 20-year bond measure that says every year, we're gonna put out dollars that for-profit, nonprofit, and public agencies can apply for to build these types of housing developments and these kinds of community resource spaces. And so I appreciate that these conversations are important, but I want to acknowledge that Contra Costa Fire has held this property with this designation for, to my knowledge, at least 10 years. And the city of Antioch has designated that that should be shelter housing and residential housing for the last 10 years. California put out that Home Key funding five years ago, and Measure X started three years ago. So if we acknowledge that we're behind the curve, we need to move the conversation from here to somewhere where it can become larger and it can move into action. And my name is Andrew Becker, and I work in the affordable housing development space, and I've proactively pushed for these programs and resources and would happen to be a part of that conversation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment?
No further public comments.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you coming up here today and updating us.
As always, I appreciate it. Appreciate the community support and the support from all of you. This is very premature, but I won't see you until afterwards, so happy holidays, have a great start to the new year.
All right. Thank you. It's the first time we've heard that this year, so thanks. All right. Moving on to item number five, Consent Calendar. Do we have any items, agenda items to be pulled by the council or the public?
We have a request for item F.
Item F? Any other from the council? None from the council? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Consent Calendar items A, B, C, D, and E?
Move Consent Calendar excluding item F.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Item F, Request to Overhire One Public Safety and Community Resources Director.
Thank you. What is the question?
I'm not sure. Is there a public comment on that?
Yes, we have a public comment. Leslie May?
Okay. I asked this to be pulled because just like we just got through hearing about the nine-year-old who was playing in a facility, a store or something, and the bullet went through the wall and hit him. So he didn't have, the nine-year-old did not have a gun, like some people have said. He's just playing in the building next door, and a bullet went through and hit him. We also had an incident here in Antioch that everybody is downplaying, where the students here at Antioch High School were beating up, I saw the video, the child with autism. That touches my heart. I have two grandsons, level two and level three with autism. Okay? I know. I work with people with severe mental illness or different things have happened, and every time I turn around, I end up sending referral out, and they say, yep, they diagnosed him with autism. I'm like, this child got autism. So when I spoke about the police and saying I went on the APOC because I wanted to repair relationships, so, and I was saying they shouldn't be sent to certain things that we have this office that's been sitting due to people getting ill. I don't know what was going on with these folks that had the jobs, but they got ill, whatever the case. And so now it's time for to kick this office into business. This is the kind of stuff. They can be addressing these kids. They can send people out to have meetings, mandatory meetings, doing them at their schools, having a center where they can meet with these youth and do the work that needs to be done, talking to them, talking to the parents, trying to change how these people think. It's emotional, what they say, emotional intelligence. They're looking at the news, they're looking at stuff, they're listening to parents saying they start, they don't have any money to buy groceries, they don't have any money to do this, they don't have. So the kid's like, well, shoot, I'm, let me do what I gotta do to help my family. And some of them are just because they are addicts at 10, 11, and 12 years old. They've been vaping, they've been smoking weed, they drink, they syrup. So what I'm saying is, the Office of Public Safety and Community Resources need to have, be fully staffed. Their staff can, you know, they can set it up where they can go, like I said, to the schools and address this. I said, and I put on social media and all these folks out here that are talking loud and saying nothing, I said, I'll volunteer 10 Saturdays in a row, six hours a day, to work with those kids from there, but also the parents. I don't want this to kids, because what are you parents teaching your kids? So I'm saying that I want this to be approved because we need them to kick into high gear and do what this office was created to do. And we can't do this half-staffed or whatever. So we need this to be kicked into service right now, and then perhaps they can work with the police department in terms of researching and seeing what they've been doing too and how they can kind of work together, use them, however they gotta do it, but still freeing the police department up for the major stuff and let this department come in, because that's what was a Cal VIP. That's what we got that money for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
No further public comments.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question of the city manager. This item is actually put Monza Rock Cabral in the position for five months, correct? Or four? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comment from council?
Move approval.
Have a motion? All right, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All right. Councilmember Torres Walker, second. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to public hearing, this is the item number six, Wildflower Station Townhomes Two, multi-family residential project. This is continued from October the 28th, 2025, and we will not be opening the public hearing, but any public comment on this would be for three minutes if anybody would like to comment. So turn that over to our city manager.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. This item was continued from the October 28th City Council meeting. The project applicant is seeking approval of a vesting tentative subdivision map and design review. The project includes the development of 19 townhome buildings with 159 residential units associated with improvements. Zoe Merritt, our planning manager, will provide a brief staff report.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As the city manager said, this is a housing project for 159 residential uses. Staff and the planning commission both recommend approval of this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
So I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but I watched. Been watching all of them from home. So of course, you know, I, it made my blood boil, and I understand the council's hands are kind of tied because it was the previous council. This came up before. I think it was when they voted and said, okay, we can go ahead with that. But in the meantime, we have criminal activity that's happened with the people who want to build. And so I appreciate them, I hope they're here, I appreciate them coming up in here, bullying and basically threatening Antioch. What you gonna do if Antioch doesn't go for it? The city council is just them, the city council. I happen to work in a field where I get a chance to meet attorneys, city council members from other places.
Ms. Wilson, excuse me, can you please address the council?
Well, I'm doing attorneys, city council members, and a whole lot of other people, and they've had a few words. I've been on the phone with several of them. I didn't call them, they called me, because they know I'm a rebel rouser. And just because the city council can't do anything about them, I have been advised that the citizens of Antioch can file a class action suit against this company and stop this development, because we don't want criminals building up in here. We don't know what kind of criminal activity they're gonna allow up in there after they build. We don't know who's gonna be paid under the table. We don't know how many cups of money is gonna be passed, or shoes maybe. It's good in Christmas time, no telling what's gonna be passed in. So I want to put them on blast, that they need to come up here, and you better be real humble, because we're ready to put the pen to the paper and file this lawsuit to stop you from building in our city. We already had enough corruption, and I'm not gonna say who it was, we all know, that we're trying to clear up. Your case isn't being, hasn't even been heard yet in the court, and you trying to bully your way through. So you need to really, really step really gently here in the city of Antioch. I called Melissa Case, I don't know why she didn't call me back, because she probably don't like me anyway. I was trying to get her to talk to her about the class action. So now it's on record, I'm saying it on public record, we want to file a class action to stop them from building anything here, not even the outhouse. Thank you.
All right. Melissa?
It's sad that they aren't here, but at the last meeting, we heard De Nova talk about how much they care about our community, but only after some council members prompted them that they hadn't listened to public comments. So it's basically been all words and no actions, and I'm gonna take you back to April 2024. I know some of you weren't on council, but they announced their nonprofit Yellow Roof, and they gave a presentation, and they promised six low-income homes with granny flats in them through their nonprofit at Rancho Meadows. So what's that project doing now? Maybe Zoe can update us, but I went on the website, that project's on hold. So the low-income homes that they were running through their nonprofit is now on hold. I don't know why. I think that's important, because they say they care about Antioch, and that's the reason they were gonna bring. they were gonna bring their nonprofit to us. And let's not forget the last two council meetings when De Nova was here, and y'all went out in the hallway for those hallway huddles, I called them, private conversations between De Nova representatives and some of our city officials that were not visible to the public or online viewers. And my galt told me then that something was off. I shared some of my concern with a certain staff member that stayed in the gallery, and it felt like everyone, from the city attorney to the planning department, was working for De Nova instead of working for Antioch. And I understand the importance of maintaining good relationships with developers, but as a citizen, I'm kind of concerned because it showed an appearance of preferential treatment towards De Nova, and that raises serious questions to me. If De Nova is already facing indictments for bribery, why are we turning a blind eye here? Who truly benefits from these cozy relationships? I feel like I want a PRRs to the employees for their larger deposits of 5K or more. I'm not gonna do that, but I am gonna PRR for conversations before that those developments were rezoned. De Nova talks about community values, but they failed to deliver on their nonprofit commitments, have been caught in corruption sandals, engage in off-the-record discussions during public business. If they generally cared about Antioch, they would use their nonprofit to include some more block below market rate homes at Wildflower Station, but I won't hold my breath. My heart says to vote no on this. My head understands the threats of litigation are a real concern for the city's finances. However, I strongly believe transparency and accountability are essential here. If De Nova chooses to sue Antioch, I want it known to De Nova that I'll be at the courthouse with my community, even Leslie May, and I will speak to any news station covering the story and express my concerns public and loudly. And at the end of the day...
Thank you.
I'll say, I appreciate any way you vote, thank you.
All right, any other public comment? Mr. Becker?
You know, I guess frustration is really just the tip of the iceberg because when the city goes through a housing element update process in a city of 120,000 people roughly, and you have less than 50 people show up, it says something. But I think what concerns me even more, and I'm a transparent person, right? I'm a part of this community. I live here. I engage here, and I wasn't here at this last meeting. But I did watch it, and I was so disheartened to see a council member, Councilmember Wilson, say that she cannot support a project on a site that you were a part of the process in rezoning to allow that exact type of development. When that housing element update process was going on, I felt that it was not a robust enough process and that the right information wasn't getting to the right people. So I, as a community member, went out of my way and took my time to go and rent space at the Antioch Library and invite community there to inform them on what was happening through that process, and I invited you all there, the previous council, I should say. And Councilmember Torres Walker was the only person that showed up. How do you say, we don't want to see this turn into residential, but then you were a part of the process in rezoning those properties? I watched, I was a part of those meetings. I said to you that there is a disparity in where these properties are located, in what this rezone process is, and it's a disconnect between what I think staff is proposing and what the community really wants. This is exactly what I said. And nobody had the time to respond to my phone calls, nobody had the time to take the meetings. But then we sit here and we waste staff's time and we waste the developers' time when frankly, the development should have been approved at the first meeting because it was an SB 330 and the developer did exactly what you as a city told them to do. So if you don't like it, you need to look inwards. And that's my time.
Any other public comment?
No further public comments.
All right. City Council, any questions or of staff? No? Any comments?
Do we have to?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to, or you want to make a comment?
Yeah, yeah, no, if you want to comment, you can. I just will stay consistent with what I said last week, in line with our last speaker. Clearly, it says during discussion in the packet, the Housing Accountability Act, HAA, establishes limitations to a local government's ability to deny, reduce the debt density of or make feasible housing development projects that are consistent with the local government's general plan, zoning, and objective development standards. Staff has determined that the project complies with Antioch's general plan, zoning, and objective standards. Therefore, the HAA restricts Antioch's ability to deny the project. So as was stated in our last speaker, whether we are crazy about this development or not, the reality is, we have to be objective in the decisions we make on development projects, and if they meet the zoning regulations that are in place at the local government level and fall into our general plan, and it meets all the guidelines and has been received the planning commission's recommendation to the city council for adoption, I'm gonna be consistent with that and follow SB 330's legislation that requires us to do so. So my, but will be, yes.
All right, thank you.
I missed the last meeting, but I did watch. I also got to like watch my colleagues take a break, leave out, talk to the developer to try to figure out, like, given that there's no way you could deny this project, what are they willing to give to the community? And even after that discussion, I watched a little longer and they came back and still committed to nothing. Because they know that we can't stop this development from happening. I do, I was here, Andrew and I, I tried to make it to every meeting, and the only reason why I know so much about the housing element and how this zoning was gonna impact our community was because of residents like Andrew, who was like, hey, I'm right here, I'm trying to warn y'all, I'm trying to let y'all know what the impact is gonna be versus what staff told us the options. What happened is like mixed-use, mixed-use development is important in communities that are trying their hardest to figure out economic development. But instead of getting, I'm gonna speak for myself, instead of getting what I thought was gonna be mixed-use development that could meet our housing needs as well as drive economic development, we got something totally different. And so I think it is, you know, important to take responsibility for not understanding the full scope of what we were doing at that time and what we expected versus what we have now. And I think moving forward, because we are, you know, finally working on the general plan, that's not as old as me, but you know, that we can address some of these zoning issues so that we can actually have housing development that also drives economic development. I will not be voting for or against this project because I'm not against development, I'm not against mixed-use, I have other reasons while I'll be abstaining from this vote tonight.
Yeah, Councilmember Freitas?
So I have been consistent from the very beginning, and part of my concern goes back to the actual development of the general plan. And more than 25 years ago, you know, what were the, one of the main issues that we needed to increase economic development? And we had an extraordinary three-year process of community meetings, community involvement, discussions that went on and on and on to reflect what the community wants. The problem with SB 3, there are a lot of problems, but the problem with SB 330 is that it usurps the power of local government. It takes away our discretion. And we are elected by the people. And unfortunately, because of the state legislation, we, in my opinion, are failing our community because there should not be a development in this particular area. This area that we're talking about was intentionally, deliberately chosen to help the city of Antioch with sales tax revenue and economic development, but to help all of eastern Contra Costa County, to be a hub for economic development. And thoughts back then, that came from me and others, is that this is an opportunity to work with our other communities, Pittsburgh, Oakley, Brentwood, and ourselves and the county unincorporated, to do things jointly. And I am so offended by SB 330, and I am so offended by De Nova Housing. We did have a lot of public discussion. We, in my opinion, raised many legitimate issues, but because they have the law behind them in SB 330, they can ignore us completely. And as I have stated before, I'm voting no on this, but I know legally, it puts us in a very difficult bind. But there has to be some protest. There has to be people like myself and others who say, yes, I understand the law, but the law is broken. The law is not helping our economy because we are still in a deficit. We didn't get rid of it completely. And there are really only two primary sources of revenue to the city, property taxes and sales tax. And here we have a primary piece of property that is going to be ripped away from us for economic development. What was true 25 years ago is even more true today. You know, we planned that Slant Ranch Road would go up north and curve and go to the BART station, and that we would have high-density, you know, development around the BART station. And we would use the property for economic development, and that is being taken away from us, and it is not in our best interest. So I haven't changed my opinion, I will be voting no.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'll just, because everybody's kind of made their points, I'll keep mine short and to the point. And the reason why I was upset with the developer and why I was very frustrated because the original project that was presented to us had a mix of residential, residential towards the back and some commercial towards the front to work seamlessly between that spot and where the, I can't think of the name of the coffee shop that's gonna be right across the way, and the fact that it was close to a BART station. That is what I was upset about because that was what was presented, and then to have that changed was very frustrating. I get that our hands, it's unfortunate that our hands are tied due to state law, and they were able to find a loophole to jump through, because we haven't done our inclusionary housing, and we had that up and ready, that probably would have protected us. So it's just unfortunate that we're gonna have to deal with this project and because the state, you know, the state is supporting them, but my frustrations are still there due to the fact that we were presented one thing originally years ago and we're getting something else. That is where my frustration was.
All right, I'll just say that the developer, I think, is the wrong place to focus our anger. I mean, this is a property that was zoned residential, ABAG, MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, Association of Area Governments, the legislature, they're all pushing these higher housing numbers, they're mandating them. We must comply. We got a letter from Department of Housing and Community Development that was written in such a way just to provide the facts of what would happen if we do not approve this project tonight. They're very clear, we will end up in litigation, that's not a question, that's a fact. We will end up in front of the Attorney General of California, and so I do not see this as a battle that I am gonna vote for us to fight. I don't, I don't like the lack, loss of local control. We fight for it at League of California Cities, which is now CalCities. We always try to maintain local control, but folks out of San Francisco and places like that have different ideas. And really, what the end result is, is it pushes housing to cities like Antioch so we can provide the workforce that goes into San Francisco. So I'm not happy about it, but I don't see any way around it, and frankly, this is something we are gonna have to address as a city to figure out the best way to address the fact that we do have a lot of formerly commercial properties that are now residential that are going to be coming forward to us with similar-type projects that we will find ourselves in the same boat. So with that, if there's no other comments, can I get a motion? Okay.
One other, just to be fiscally responsible, again, we are opening ourselves up for litigation that's gonna cost us a great deal of money, which I assume will come through our general fund, which we are facing a deficit next year, and this is a fight that I don't believe we have a chance to win. I think it's been made clear to us what the odds are. And to me, I think that we're setting ourselves up, we're setting the city up for litigation that will cost us, and we have no chance of prevailing. So I'm trying to be objective and fiscally responsible here in decisions we're making, and I hope that we don't get ourselves in that situation where we are placed on the map of Northern California to be the case that will go to trial or move in that direction, and then we are required to pay the fees that go along with that from our general fund. I just don't understand why we're going there if we do, but I just wanted to make it for the record clear that I just think that it's a bad decision for us to, we are a general law city, we are required to abide by the state of California's constitution, which includes Assembly and Senate bills. So for us to deny this, and I think we're being subjective, not objective, I think is a huge mistake, and that's just my one individual statement I'll make.
Councilmember Torres Walker?
I think it's been made very clear what the liability could be and that this project need to move forward. I think it's also clear that everybody has made their position clear, and we just need to vote.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve the Planning Commission recommendation for this project?
I'll move to approve.
Have a second? I'll second it. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 3, 1 to 1 with Councilmembers Freitas voting no and Councilmember Torres Walker abstaining.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to public comments. Any public, that didn't make public comment at the beginning of the meeting?
We have one public comment.
All right.
Gavin Payton.
I'm gonna make mine a little brief because I am very tired. I just got back from San Francisco. I first wanted to thank you guys for attending our Champions for Youth banquet. I'm sorry I haven't been here the last couple of meetings, I've been busy running around. I just wanted to also state that, to like to respond a little bit about the violence that's been going on, this is not... that's been going on, this is not new. We also have been getting reports and complaints from youth that it's still not safe to walk around the streets, not only in just Antioch, but around the county. So I'm not, I don't think this is just an Antioch issue, I think this is more of like even a state issue, because it's across the United States. Because we were just at our state convention, and we were talking about the safeties of us going around, walking around. It's not safe for us to walk around. It's not safe because we have people thinking it's okay to dress up in Klan outfits and come to our schools. We think, people think it's okay to stand, stand for racism, and it's not okay. It's not okay for a young African-American that wants to come to school, and they can't come to school because they're afraid of them getting shot in the school system, or they are afraid of being hurt or ridiculed. And then when they speak up about it, when they speak up about these bullying, bullying and instances that are happening, and this is not just bullying, this is abuse. It is abuse on the young people, and if you are condoning it, then you are just as guilty. If you're standing by and watching it, you're just as guilty. Because not only it happened to, not only just the youth, but it's happened to multiple generations. When are we going to cut the generation of pain? That is just pain, we're passing down pain. If you want it to stop, then you have to make a decision and make it stop. You have the power to make it stop, so make it stop. If we want to make it safer, then let's make it safer. But let's not put police in a position where the youth don't know who they are. Let's make it so that we all come together, we all stand strong, because that's what we need in this community. We not just need it here in California, but we need it here across the nation, because now, become after January, now it's going to be not only to fight for our lives as young people, but it's going to be attack on every senior citizen, it's just going to be on attack of every woman, it's going to be on attack on every male. And if you don't realize that, and you don't see that, then you are asleep. And it's about time that you wake up. It's about time that you see the pain that is going through, through these people and through the young people as well. Thank you.
Evening again, and just to kind of back with Mr. Payton, President Payton was saying, we are living in an unprecedented time in our country. Come January first, a lot of folks are gonna lose their health care, a lot of folks are gonna lose their homes, a lot of folks are gonna lose hospitals that they can reach because we haven't learned our lessons and our sins from our past. What is this city gonna do to address these things? What is, Antioch, city of one hundred and seventeen thousand people, how are we gonna respond to this? How is our county gonna respond for the prolonged next three years of our current administration? I don't think people understand all the politics, I don't think they understand all the messaging, I don't think they understand the movement that needs to happen. And that's up to people like myself who come to these meetings, it's up to the elected officials, it's up to our city manager, our city attorney, our community, our nonprofits, to really get that across. Because the silent voter, the silent majority of vote, voters don't really pay attention to this. And I'm afraid that a hun, a hu, a city of one hundred and seventeen thousand people are not prepared to know what's really gonna happen. And thank goodness Prop fifty passed tonight. Thank goodness we have people in New York like Zoran Mondami, who are out here talking about these real issues, these hard truths that now exist, have, have existed, but now they're being put into practice even more. I'm prepared for the fight. As tired as I am, I am ready to mend relationships, keep building coalition, and stay strong together. Because, like I said at the beginning of my public comment, this is an unprecedented time, that none of us were here four hundred years ago. I just want you guys all to be strong in the fight and stay true to who you are, mend those relationships, build these coalitions, work with others you see division with, because it's not gonna get easier from here. Thank you, good night.
All right, any other public comment?
No further public comments.
All right, staff communications.
Yes, thanks so much, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to give a quick update on our funding with Townsend Public Affairs. We've been turning in a lot of grant applications, and I wanted to specifically shout out to Director Cabral for turning in three major grant applications in the last couple of weeks, the CalVit five, and then she created a Stay Safe program, applying for the county's NOFO and one point two million dollars of funding application to serve approximately thirty-two-hundred people in several different ways. This is to expand our laundry service, to help with ID and document services and support. A lot of times people can't get housing because they don't have birth certificates, they're not document-ready because they're transient, and so she's wanting to really bolster that, given rent and utility assistance and funding stabilization and case management. Also, permanent supportive housing is another application that she's applying for, so I just want to really shout out to Townsend, Nicolo, as well as Montserrat Cabral, because these grant applications have a quick turnaround time. The county NOFO had, I think, twenty-nine or thirty days turnaround, it was unbelievable. And so she got that in by the thirty-first, you know, with a few minutes to spare, and so I just really appreciate her effort. Every time I send her something, she never says no. She finds a way to make sure that we apply for funding, and Nicolo and his team get us to the finish line, so I appreciate them. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about, which I think the mayor, Pro Tem, and Councilmember Torres Walker already discussed, was Base Camp. And then we're also transitioning and helping our housing consultant, Terry House. So we have a huge document sort of records management cleanup going on for the last fifteen years, with all of our housing information, it's a big job, so patience, but we're putting everything online, so we have historical information about how we got here with our housing funding. And there's a cou, a couple of events that I noticed that we didn't talk about. On Saturday, we have the last community cleanup from the Police Chief's Department, that's in the downtown business district. We also have a Business Watch meeting downtown on Saturday. So the cleanup starts at ten, the Business Watch meeting starts at, at noon, and I will send all this information out. And then our Shahad didn't mention that on the fifteenth, Contra Loma Estates Park has our big ribbon cutting, so we're finally going to be opening that park on the fifteenth, and we will let you all know, of course, our PIO is in the audience, and he will be doing all the things. And also I want to shout out to Jayden, our, our Public Information Officer, and our Community Development Team for putting the dashboards that you all saw online. So the Community Development Department's dashboard, including how many building inspections, fines collected, our code enforcement numbers, it's online now, and it will be posted by the, I think, the fifth of the next month, or the prior month. So August, September, and October are online now, and that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Council Communications and Future Agenda Items. Councilmember Freitas?
Last meeting, Councilmember Wilson brought up the, the schedule for December, so if we could please do that the next meeting before availability begins to vanish.
Oh, do you mean our, what's going on with December?
Council meetings in December.
Okay, there's two. Well, we have a special meeting on the second for priority setting with Tracy Miller, who's flying in, and then we have December ninth, and that's it.
And that's it? Okay, that's. The other is, I think, the mayor and the council received three letters from the Antioch Police Oversight Committee, from the chairperson, as well as two directors, asking for a joint meeting between APOC and the City Council. I thought that the meeting that we had with the Planning Commission went extremely well, and I think that we should have a meeting with APOC and the City Council, you know, hopefully within the next thirty to forty-five days, or at the very beginning of January. I think it's, would be important to have that dialogue and that discussion, so I would recommend that we schedule that as soon as possible, not let it, you know, go by, but actually to do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Torres Walker?
Just, man, my, I've been like having some allergy stuff going on, so like wiping my nose, I like broke out in hives a week ago, I actually broke out today, so I'm up here itchy, so I'm ready to get home. I guess what, what I would like to see, an update on filling the APOC vacancy, the vacancy on APOC. It's my understanding that there is a vacancy that need to be filled after Commissioner Haddon resigned, so it'd be nice to know when that's coming to council. You mentioned Contra Loma Estates Park, so hap, excited about the park reopening, and grateful to all of the community members who, who like worked with the city over the years to make this happen. I know when we did our Antioch Community Day at that park, we had over two thousand people there and a lot of resources, and so really excited about making that a neighborhood park, like a real city park. I don't think people understand, it's like, we have a lot of neighborhood parks in Antioch, but we don't have a lot of city parks. And when people say, well, why do you have a neighborhood park with no bathroom, well, you know what that is. The reason why every park is a neighborhood park with no restroom is because if you don't live in that neighborhood, you're not supposed to be at that park. Right? And so it's a way to keep people out of neighborhoods that you don't think should be there, which means we don't get to enjoy amenities that our tax dollars pay for, because it's a neighborhood park rather than a city park. And there's a lot of those in the city, so I'm excited about this park finally becoming a city park rather than a neighborhood park where you either gotta get porta-potties if you want to have an event there, or you gotta live in the neighborhood and run to somebody's bathroom. So I'm excited about seeing this become a city, a true city park. Website and YouTube, so I tried to watch the APOC meeting. The first two hours of a three-hour meeting on YouTube was not visible. I don't know what happened, I kept rewinding it, trying to figure, it picked up right at the discussion, like the tail end of the discussion with the police chief, but on YouTube it say it's a three-hour and some change meeting, but it's only viewable for the last hour. So I don't know if that's something, I know we still working out the kinks, but like to miss two hours of a three-hour meeting, when you're trying to watch on YouTube is, is, you know, is pretty challenging, because you can't go back, like, and correct that. I don't know if that could be corrected. Some other things that came up to me from residents, and I was also thinking about this myself, about the website, you used to have the council meetings visible on the website, and you didn't have to go to YouTube. And so if YouTube is messing up, and you're not in front of your TV, there's no other way for you to watch the meeting, and normally you could watch it. Like, the recording even, people have contacted me and was like, they, you can't even get the recording of the council meetings and the commission meetings off the website anymore. And if you try to get it from YouTube, you have to pay for it. So it's like we're already paying for people to represent us in this building and in this space, we're already paying our tax dollars for websites and access to documents, and now we have to pay a separate third-party site to download the videos? I don't, I, I don't think that that's right. So I'd like the link to YouTube, that people could watch it on YouTube, but I think we need to bring back the resident's ability to watch the replay on the website and be able to download that content, because it's still not viewable on the website. And I also just want to like raise up some of what Devin was saying, is like, look, we, I've been saying this since I got here, public safety is about housing, access to food, access to resources. The reality is, is we're gonna have a great public safety issues if we don't try to figure out locally how we're gonna support poor people who facing homelessness, like facing food insecurity, facing the ability to not be able to seek medical, affordable medical care. And like if we think our issues with violence are, are challenging now, if we think our issues with economic development and bringing business to the city are challenging now, guess what's gonna happen when we, when we start to figure out that there are more people that's willing to get desperate in these times than there have been before? So I'm hoping that we actually do do something. And I too want to congratulate Zoran Mondani on his win tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind or get an update on potential, on making sure that our El Campanile Theater is a historical landmark, I think, and there was a, the library, the Carnegie Library are landmarks, so nobody can come in, you know, purchase it and then, you know, demolish it, so I want to get an update on that. Also, with the, with it looking like Prop fifty is getting ready to pass, I've already been in conversation with our, our new Congressman, Josh Harder, who wants to come and do an event here in Antioch to meet the community, have conversations. So I'm working with the city manager and for, for that to happen soon. So be on the lookout for one of our new coun, or council member, congress members to come to our city to have a conversation, to get to know us.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Rocha.
Well, speaking of Josh Harder, now that I'm hearing that fifty passed, I'm supposed to actually meet him on Monday, so hopefully we can kind of develop a partnership, since he'll be representative coming into our district. I'm familiar with him from Stockton, because they have a lot of family in Stockton, and he's a big supporter of veterans and, and so forth, so I'm interested in learning more about him. Tor, Councilmember Torres Walker and I both sit on the Standing Committee for Schools and City, and what I'd like to request is if our city manager could maybe speak with the superintendent of schools. I know there's a desire for us to meet as a, as a full city council and school board. I know we've had some discussions about maybe possibly meeting in the new year, January, February possibly, because we're doing a survey, I don't know what the timeline would be, but I would like to at least inquire on getting our calendars together, and then see if it's possible for us to meet as a full council and school board, because I do think over the time that Ms. Torres Walker and I sat in on the Standing Committee, that we've seen some progress in partnership, collaboration, and so I think it's a good time for us to come together and see what we can do together. Because as been stated earlier, come January first and so forth, there's gonna be a lot of challenges, and I think we need to address it together as a community, because I think the challenges are gonna be great. The schools have all children, I think it's like seventeen thousand students that attend AUSD, it's our biggest employer. And so I just think that they have resources, we have resources, and maybe together we can accomplish more. So that's something that I would really like to assist you. And then one thing, I, I think it might be already on our list, but I get communications about, about street calming, and like what streets are being considered, what's like kind of the, is there a waiting list, who's next? I don't know how Public Works might be able to communicate that to us, but when I get calls, I don't know what to tell them other than to call City Council. I've heard some, I mean, City Hall, I've heard some people when they write to me, and I've spoken to them on the phone, that they've already gone through the paperwork, they've applied, they've received a letter stating that they've met the requirements, but then I don't know what happens next, I don't know what the timeline is. So I just think that that, it might be on my ninety-day list, I'm not sure, but I thought I would bring it up again. Thank you.
There is a waiting list, and you cannot jump the line. Some of us have been waiting for speed bumps for four years.
I'm not trying to jump the line, I just, I just want clarity, I just want transparency and clarity.
All right, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second, please cast your votes.
Where are you?
Motion passes five zero.
I wasn't trying to jump the line.